Yeah, we've got seven thirty left. Paul, you're in the one. Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
And then for fire. Exactly. Ms. Thor.
Here.
Ms. Bowe. Bowe was absent. We've got four in attendance. We've got a quorum. We have got a meeting. Ms. Bowe is requested to attend this meeting electronically, so we have a motion to so approve.
So moved the athlete second.
Second, Harvey.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by everybody else. To allow Courtney Bowe to attend remotely. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion so carries. Courtney?
No, she's not here.
Okay. When she chimes in, she's allowed to come in. All right. The next item on the agenda is the minutes on February third, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Thor and approved the minutes on February third, two thousand twenty-five. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Revenant, none. Since Courtney is not with us, we will continue to voice votes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion so carries. Thank you all. Okay, move to the president's report. First thing the president reports is the civility pledge, and this week I pass that to Mr. Harney. So kindly read that for us.
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we're all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we may each have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Oh, we've got a text from Courtney. She's trying to join in, so if she comes in there, just let me know, so I can get in. Okay, president's report. There's a couple of items here. Uh, first off, uh, would like to say it was with regrets that I've accepted the letter of retirement from Sergeant Wilson, who, uh, will be leaving us on May second after, or March second. She can stay till May second. It's just another sixty days. I'll bet guess, uh, twenty-eight years is a full-time police officer in the Village of Sleep Hollow. Two years, I believe, is a part-time. Regrets I accept her resignation, her retirement, but I wish her well.
Are we gonna do anything?
We're currently setting something up for March seventh at the Village Hall. We're working on that right now.
Fine. I think she's gonna stay active with the kids up at school.
She is. She's gonna do our, uh, our Too Good For Drugs program through the end of the year.
Definitely.
So it should be a new part-time environment.
But if you say it the next couple of weeks. You will sure to wish her well. Uh, the other item I've got, if you recall, some eight weeks or so ago, I mentioned that Metro Net had expressed an interest in providing the village with fiber optics for internet service. Uh, they were working on their proposal and their idea. I've got word that they have decided to go forward. Include Sleepy Hollow in that plan. They will be contacting the, uh, building department and the engineers here within probably the weeks or so, and have a pre-construction conference to begin the rollout for them throughout the village. So should be an exciting summer of construction. Uh, the other thing I've got is rumor of people wanting a farmer's market in Sabatino Park. There is no problem with anyone having a farmer's market in Sabatino Park if we've got an organization that accepts responsibility for this market and provides the insurance, the parking, the alignment, the coordination with the police and the village. But before anybody just goes crazy, somebody's gonna have to stand up and say, we're responsible and we will get the insurance. We will not hold the village liable for this. Just like I said, there's talk out there, and I know people get excited and they come on and in, and then we say, you gotta think all the way through this thing first. There'll be things, where will it be held? What hours will it be held? Those all have to be decided, and we need a contact person and organization that's responsible. Ms. Bowe has joined us, so from henceforth, all votes will be by roll call.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Other than that, I don't have anything else from the president's report. We work, sports report. Uh, I have an hour report from there. Courtney, uh, planning and zoning, Mrs. Detmer is with us via Zoom.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, at last week's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commissioners um, moved to continue the public hearing to their March tenth, um, meeting. So the previous information that I said would be in your packets and available for you this week, uh, this meeting is not going to be possible until in March. So the only other thing is, is that this Friday at ten o'clock, the Planning and Zoning Commission is having their special meeting with the business owners. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Detmer. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Stay warm.
Will try.
Okay, next is the attorney's report. From Mr. Schuster this evening. We move to the engineer's report. Engineer did not get us an update on the.
He, uh, after we got the packet out, he sent a note saying that he meant to send a report that said he has no reporting.
Well, we will report that he reported that he had no report on our report.
That's easy for you to say.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Jeff, for the report, the non-report. And we move to the director of finance, Mr. Van.
Request a motion for the approval of the accounts payable in one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars to forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thor, seconded by Thomas to approve the accounts payable for February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Any additions, deletions? Pause, I need a motion. No, you got it. Okay. No additions, deletions, no questions? Roll call, please. Ms. Bowe.
Aye.
Mr. Det.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Ms. Thor.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so carries. Thank you all.
For those of you who are holding your breath waiting for the state to give us our two hundred thousand dollars, you've got the check. So I am very surprised that it came this quickly, but, uh, so it goes towards the framed project. So that was just about half, it's sort of maybe a little bit more than half of this cost. So.
Already spent?
Yes, already spent. Um, we're gonna have a finance committee meeting next week, uh, it is the twenty-sixth, to go over the preliminary figures for the budget. And, uh, part of that, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. What I'm trying to do is put money aside for the, um, the meter fees, you know, we've been collecting these meter fees. And then, you know, twenty years from when we put them in, they have to be replaced. So I wanted to make sure that we have the money set aside to pay for these meters, so we don't have to go into debt or whatever. So, uh, I started looking at that and I said, you know, are our current fees going to match what it will be in the what, fourteen years from now? And, um, the, the average meter or the, the most common meter was two hundred dollars at that time. It is now three hundred and seventy-two dollars for just the meter. It doesn't include the installation cost, which I ensure has gone up too. So I'm going to bring it to the finance committee that, that is really to calculate these, um, meter fees for the, uh, for the bill. So I, I'm looking at about going from a dollar eighty-nine to basically three fifty-five, that just try to keep up with inflation. So that, you know, in fourteen years, the village is not in a bad position, but has to replace meters that are failing, and we wouldn't have the money to do that. That's all I have for those couple topics. The, um, is that we have mentioned was the, um, HBA system for the village hall here. Um, it's fairly comfortable in here right now, and that's only because of the running these little mirrors, you know, since I came in at, uh, you know, seven forty-five this morning. And, uh, I went out to lunch or to dinner and I turned them off and came back and the temperature dropped six degrees. So there's like no insulation in here, so we really need, um, a decent running system. Uh, we had, um, reheating and cooling come out by bulletproofs, um, and said previous experience with them and have them give us a quote of what it would take. Um, they felt that the, uh, system that we have, um, will work. Um, it's on the high setting, it's, it's marginal, but, um, what they want to do is um, inspect all the, um, or ducts to, uh, to make sure that there's no problems with them. My, my personal opinion is, is I think there's a burr in them somewhere because we just don't have the airflow in here that we should have. Um, they also said that, uh, we don't have any, um, lower level return vents. So basically what's happening is that the heat is coming in and getting sucked right out with the ceiling return vents. Um, so they would put in a, um, some lower level return lines. Um, also there, um, in the mechanical room, when the door is closed, it is actually pulling in air to feed the furnace from the outside through the cracks that are in the wall. So you can physically, you know, feel the cold air rushing into that room. And so basically the, the furnace was starving for air in order to heat it for, for this room. Um, since we have cracked open the fire door, um, it's improved a little bit, you know, um, earlier this, this winter, when I was coming in, you know, over the, uh, from the weekend, the temperature in the hallway was fifty-nine degrees when the thermostat was set at seventy. Um, this time with the door cracked a little bit, it was up to sixty-four degrees. So there, there's, you know, they've said that there are some problems. So anyway, and long story short, is that, um, for about two thousand dollars, um, they believe that they can, um, do something to help improve the situation. They believe that the real answer is spray foaming the ceiling and removing the, um, the bad insulation that we have. Um, however, that would be extremely expensive and I'm kind of of the opinion that I would rather spend two grand to see if this would help improve the system before I go and spend, you know, look to spend the money for a spray foam insulation. Um, when I was kind of going over this, I, I was kind of figuring about five thousand dollars, so I was very surprised at the, at the two thousand dollar amount. So, um, we can either go with this, we can go out and get other bids. We can just continue on as we are, just, you know, I'm just trying to give you guys options. But I, I, I just want to say that it is, on our side of the building, it is very uncomfortable. Um, the police side had a new furnace put in, and I think they are nice and pushy over there. But our, our side is, um, I, I have my heater, little heater going constantly. It's just we can't get it warming here on the side.
Eugene, did they say how much it would cost to spray?
Um, I had a, um, a twenty by twenty foot room spray foam, I think it was like about like five thousand dollars. And so you have this spray foam, I, I think it's probably gonna be about twenty thousand dollars. So.
Um, with my experience, I worked for an ancient company, um, the prices that you have, they're very. Yeah, these are very reasonable prices. Um, I think it would be money well spent to have that done, then you know exactly what you're dealing with and where you can go. And from what they're saying here, I think there's a lot of things that could, like you said, just the airflow make it work better. So, uh, I, we. For this.
Okay. Yeah, so you know, I put my hand up by the air vents and you just can't feel anything. There, there's just no air coming out of them.
You have the two K anymore?
We, we will find it.
Do we have to go with bids or can we go ahead?
You know, all we need is a purchase order and approval. And if somebody would like to make the motion, we just move it right on through tonight.
Uh, can I ask a quick question? Sorry, it just broke up a little bit. Um, Eugene, can you just clarify for me? You said something, two thousand dollars, they think they can help, and you thought it was gonna be five thousand. But then just at the end, you mentioned spray insulation would be nearly twenty thousand. So what's the, can you reiterate what the two thousand was for specifically?
The two thousand is, this should have been in the packet.
Oh, okay, that's, okay. I thought we're, I'm sorry.
This is a, uh, a bid that, you know, a proposal that we got from them.
Okay, yeah. Nope, I'm cut.
We've got, we've got four items on there, Courtney. Throttle duct inspection, six hundred dollars. Fresh air dampener positioning with a, a manual handle, two hundred dollars. A six-inch combustion to the outside, uh, six hundred dollars. And a low return with a filter grill in the hallway, another six hundred, and that comes to two K.
Thank you. I, my computer still wasn't hooking up, so I connected on Zoom through my phone, so I don't have the agenda direct, or the agenda packet in front of me yet, so that's familiar now. Thank you.
Good thing.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the lay bid to, for two thousand dollars to further investigate the air heating and AC system.
A second.
Moved with the athlete, seconded by Thomas to approve the estimate and, uh, recommendations from reheating regarding, you know, the administrative side of the building for a total of two thousand dollars. Comments, questions, or discussion? So we're gonna do that and then decide on whether to spray it.
Right here. Yeah, I, I, I would like to at least give this a try first before I, you know, spend that tiny money. Do I take the spray foam that's gonna help? Oh, absolutely. But, you know.
Do we know what kind of problem we're gonna have when we take these tires off of spitters?
You know, it's, when, when they spray foam, the addition I had put on, it was not, not a fun thing for them, and that was, um, new construction with everything completely open. And I could just imagine that the problems that they're gonna have there, um, just the, um, rodent feces. Yes.
Anyway.
So.
Let's keep talking about it. Okay, so, roll call on that. Uh, Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Bowe.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. So carries.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Well, well, maybe it'll help the air conditioning.
Yes.
Got the opposite problem this summer. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Eugene. Uh, comments from the public? Commenting?
The old government job.
Yeah, there you go. They said the next guy. Okay, Mr. Vernon.
Thank you. Very petite. Uh, basically expanding on a little bit on the sixteen oh one West Main special use application. Uh, as pointed out, there's continuation of the public hearing coming up. Uh, part of the result from the earlier session was request, uh, that we have the petitioner submit revisions based on recommendations, suggestions, uh, from the commissioners. Uh, was asked to provide those ideally about a week before. I think it's, uh, would make it available for public viewing and for the, the commissioners to digest all the information. I think that's important for them to be able to then form proper questions, get the clarifications that are gonna be needed, so then they can turn around and provide the board with an informed recommendation on the proposed use. I think it's important they, they do get those documents as quickly as possible when they are delivered uh, to the village. Now, if they get it, if it shows up on Monday, it would be great for them to have it on Tuesday. They would have time then to, uh, review the materials. I also hope that following all the recommendations, the board will listen to the recommendation of the commissioners and the, uh, comments of, of the residents, which we've had petition going on since the end of January. We're now, as of today, up to three hundred and fifty resident signatures opposing this special use. I hope we will find a good use for that land. I really do. It'd be, it's a plus, but we can, we have to, we have to be, we gotta be picky. It's gotta be the best return. That is the only shot we've got left.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Deborah Vernon.
My wife.
No.
Hi, my name is Deborah Vernon. My husband Pete and I, we live at age twenty-one, Locust Drive, Sleepy Hollow. We're twenty-two-year-plus homeowners and residents. Our background is in finance, building development, all in local government and public entities. We live, um, actually, Sleepy Hollow Manor subdivision, unit number eight, and our home was built in nineteen sixty-one. I saw this history of Floyd Falesse on the Littah website, and I read it, and it's, it's very interesting. Um, it was under the website, Sleepy Hollow website, under Community History tab, and I went to read some of it tonight at the board meeting. The Dundee Township version of Sleepy Hollow began as a farm. It owes its existence to the vision of a single individual, Floyd T. Falesse, who was thirty-four when he bought the Sleepy Hollow farm in nineteen fifty-three. In nineteen fifty-three, he was a local resident, a member of the Italian-American community, one of seventeen children, born in Carpentersville, August sixth, nineteen eighteen, the son of parents who immigrated from Italy. He never finished high school, and in many ways, a classic example of a hard-working, self-made man. He built a beautiful home there. It was called Singing Waters with lakes and a waterfall, and moved in with his wife Jacqueline and their daughters Paulette and Sharon. He farmed the land briefly, acquired additional properties, then began subdividing the area to create an upscale housing development that was first marketed as Sleepy Hollow Manor. Falesse rejected a proposal that a new community be laid out like the usual tract development with neatly gridded streets. In the rapid expansion of the suburbs, he said, too many areas are transplanted by the city type of housing to outlying areas. They lost the country atmosphere that people were looking for when they moved. To retain the rural charm and natural look of the location, he used the services of a prominent planner and landscape architect who laid out the pattern of meandering roads, no curves or sidewalks that wound into curved cul-de-sacs, avoiding the destruction of a single tree, avoiding the destruction of a single tree. Homes were constructed on lots at half an acre or more, densely carefully selected to enhance what Falesse called the Sleepy Hollow concept of good living. Homes started to be built in the late nineteen fifties. People's reasons for settling in Sleepy Hollow helped to explain why the development succeeded and why Falesse selected the location to build it. They wanted a wooded lot with good views and acreage. That sounds like what I see every day in Sleepy Hollow. Sleepy Hollow's population in nineteen sixty was three hundred and eleven. There was a real pioneer spirit in those days because there were so few people and everybody knew each other in their unit. It was a common bond, and it was very neighborly. Sleepy Hollow was developed in units, and you were known by the unit you lived in. Referendum was held on March twelfth, nineteen fifty-eight, and the residents voted to incorporate the Village of Sleepy Hollow. Our greatest growth incurred in the nineteen sixties and by nineteen seventy had reached seven hundred and, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine in population. In nineteen seventy-three, a very active Sleepy Hollow Service Club was organized. Its sponsors, Fourth of July, Halloween, fireworks, bonfires, headless horsemen, Easter egg hunts. In addition, parents find a common interest in the Sleepy Hollow Elementary School. Floyd Falesse, who began it all, unfortunately passed away at the age of fifty-one in Elgin. He is survived by his widow Jacqueline, Paulette, and Sharon, one brother Thomas, three sisters, and many grandchildren. Grateful citizens of Sleepy Hollow dedicate a memorial to their founding father, which in memory of Mr. Falesse, had a legend and friend to all. These things that were said about him, he had a lot of guts, he had a lot of moxie, he was a guy that started with nothing. He was running hard the whole time, working hard to make Sleepy Hollow go. He was a local boy. He took out a great amount of personal pride. There was a lot of ego. These were information from the Dundee Township Historical Society nineteen eighty-five. These are my personal comments, and I'm almost done reading. What do you think Mr. Falesse would say about this proposed special use for the facility, for the storage facility? This was not his vision. This is not the wishes of the three hundred and fifty-plus people who signed the petitions. Say no to the storage facility. Sleepy Hollow, please do better for the residents you serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, back to the agenda. Published, uh, trustee reports, Robinson Parks, Mr. Harney.
Um, since the last meeting, I've got an update from the Township Highway Commissioner regarding the proposed thirty-five mile per hour speed reduction on, uh, Boncosky Road. Um, I've been informed and passed along that King County will examine if there's a need to reduce Boncosky Road's speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour. This study will be done in the spring by the county at no cost to Sleepy Hollow or the township. So we'll wait and see what happens with that study. Okay, in your packets tonight, uh, you'll find a very detailed twenty twenty-five cost estimate proposal from McLeod Aquatics to treat Lake Sharon. Uh, this is the water specialist that treated Lake Sharon last year under contract with the Sleepy Hollow Service Club and funded partly and mostly by private Sleepy Hollow residents that live on the lake. The board agreed at that time, possibly, possibly picking up that expense in following years. Uh, and would discuss it at a later date, when that date is here. I would ask that we discuss it tonight, see where we're gonna go forward with. Um, I, I took a collection of my notes from the past meetings, uh, maybe spur on discussion a little bit, in no order. I'll just throw notes that we've heard before so that we're all on the same page. First of all, my, my impression of what was done last year, I I think we could agree that aesthetically, the lake by Sabatino Park improved. It wasn't covered in muck and weeds, so that I noticed an improvement. Um, if, if you.
Um, if if you remember. Pine Lake is at a higher elevation, the water flows from Pine Lake then to Sleepy Hollow, and then finally makes its way to the Fox River. Pine Lake has started a restoration experiment. They started with a machine that clipped the. The weeds, if you'll call them the uh foliage, and. Um, it was found out that the machine was impractical. Didn't do the job, and they discontinued using that. So now they're trying some bubblers. Um, but their situation, Pine Lake is different from Lake Sharon. Pine Lake is five to eight feet deep. It's got a gravel defined bottom. Lake Sharon is not like that. We do not have gravel. We're on a peat bog that has undefined, we'll call it a muck bottom, with no defined floor to it. Uh, which presents a unique set of problems. Um, the top one block, the top one third of Lake Sharon is only inches deep. Uh, they tried to get in there with a boat to treat it, but they couldn't even float a boat in there. So. The part of the lake closest to Lake Sabatino is approximately two feet deep there. In the contract last year and the contract this year. They contract specifically states, there's no guarantee with a water depth of less than two feet. And no guarantee, it's still in there, without boat access by a trailer. That was attempted last year, that didn't work. They tore up the shore, so that, that's out of the question. Discussion was that maybe it could be done with a utility boat. And I think they've offered to do that without any further explanation, whatever, a utility boat, maybe. I won't even guess there. Uh, last year's cost, I think, was a little less than thirty five hundred. Okay, the estimate this year in your packet, you'll notice, is a little over twelve grand. Finance Committee is coming up, they're aware. Of an expressed desire to continue treatment of Lake Sharon. In the past. An option was to dredge the lake. It was decided that that was cost prohibitive, would be well over two hundred thousand dollars, and it would be considered a temporary fix. Um, Lake Sharon's challenges are ongoing, this is nothing new, and date back to well over two decades. Every study done to date stresses the importance of shoreline stabilization and phosphate blocking with. Um, shoreline vegetation. And last comment I have, um. Who owns Lake Sharon? It's privately owned by residents that live around it, and by Sleepy Hollow, our section is by Lake Sharon. So that adds some restrictions here and there with options. So if that refreshes the memory for, or if I've said anything in error, let me know, but um.
So this price is going up pretty clearly, and we have to go through this every year?
We would. The estimate is like four pages long with with a lot more treatments.
Yeah, I'll look through it.
Because we've gone from thirty five hundred to twelve thousand.
So it's not so much that the price has gone up, but maybe they're adding on extra services that are now required?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're adding on extra services, yes.
Thank you.
Ed, I did see, I agree with you, I did see an improvement, um, you know, aesthetically in the lake. Have they given any idea of with these more treatments, will it get even better, or will it? Status quo, or do they have any idea yet?
They're hoping that it would improve, but not guaranteed. The the problem is the upper part of the lake. That, you know, as Ann well knows. There's. That's a no challenge. I don't care. I don't see how we could improve much up there. But the pond that the public sees by the park. Um. We we saw an improvement. And like I say, the Finance Committee is meeting here shortly. They're they're aware of the request.
I'd like for the Finance Committee, I know we've taken a few things to them, I'd like for them to consider the sustainability of this, considering what, it came from three thousand dollars last year. Not only has the price increased, but there's additional services. And does, is that something that we can sustain for the next? Four years, life of the village? I I hope it wouldn't be that long, but. I'd like to know, yeah, is that something Mark feasible for the Finance Committee, Eugene?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely, yep.
When is it?
Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Time?
Uh, one o'clock, yeah, something like that. We we haven't gotten all the uh, everybody hasn't responded yet to the email.
Other members?
So, yeah, we plan on twenty thousand somewhere. So.
Yeah, in the proposal, there's a breakdown of all the separate costs involved.
And can somebody remind me when, when, I think it was Angela's year who gave the donation last spring or the last time we'd started this? Um, how did we arrive at this company? Was it something that we, was it a specific company we sought out? Was it somebody that was brought to us? Have we?
Brought to us, I believe, uh, Mr. Rab. Uh, I've got contact with them through the people at Pinecone Way, could we?
Okay.
Some conversations, and that's how they, you know, they came up on us.
Thank you.
Well, we've got the estimate. I didn't see a. Date that expired. They give us sixty days or ninety days on it.
I think we have to, it's the end of March.
End of March, okay.
Actually, it says for about thirty days from date of flow.
Wow.
That's like.
Yeah, we'll see if they hold on to that.
Well, I know they like to start treatment in April, if possible.
Well, that would be before this budget would be a part of operation. We have to come in now with this year's funds. Now. We're going to kick the can to the Finance Committee for review. And then come back with your recommendations.
Sure, you can do that.
Yeah. All right, anything else, Mr. Hardy?
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, next, Finance, Mr. Thornd.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mark. Water and Sewer, Ms. Bob.
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Police and Public Safety, Mr. Deantley.
Um, just a couple of brief things, um. I too agree with you, Chief, uh, Chief and President Pick, and I hate to see Sergeant Wilson go. Um, asset to the community and to uh, um, everybody here and all the citizens, so uh. Will definitely be missed, and we will hopefully celebrate her retirement well. Um, the other thing in your packet, uh, trustees, you'll note is the note that the chief put in there about his budget. Um, and how it will be affected slightly, uh, because we're going to try to get to another full-time officer. We feel this is very important to have, plus it will help allow us to have two officers on duty at all times. Uh, which is also going to come up when contract negotiations come up again next year. Um, so that is very important to take note of. So it is a slight increase, um, but uh, Chief is open to any conversations you may have. Want to have it for myself as well, um, and can certainly, you know, ask away any questions that you might have. Chief, anything else you want to add?
Um, just, I did refer, I I did go online, so I should be referred, uh, the farmer market question to trustee Hardy. Saying that you're you're in charge of that for the board, so you would be the person to start that conversation. So if they reach out to you, I was one that pointed them in your direction.
Okay.
I have that in my board. And and actually, I'll add just just one sentence up because I got uh permission. The person to contact is Christine Boothblatt, her telephone number, she gave permission, eight four seven five two five three nine five two. She's looking for any expertise, help, recommendations in setting this up. Thanks.
And the other thing is our reimbursement for um our part-time officer training should be coming through. The forms are all approved and everything should be, that two thousand dollar reimbursement will come back. Probably within the next couple of weeks, uh, and we we finalized our, they do a review of of our body cam grant. So they go through and they find, they go through all my paperwork, they check my general order, they check my body cam policy to make sure that it meets thorough standards or their standards. Everything passed, we're good, we're good with it, so that reimbursement should be consistent as well, and that was twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. We should be getting that as well.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
That's it, great.
All right, thank you, Chief, thank you, Steve. Uh, next is Public Buildings and Environmental, and Mrs. McGuire is not with us this evening, no report. So we move to Building and Dining, Ms. Thomas, you have a report. Thank you, Goy. We move to all the business, there is no business this evening, we move to new business. There is no new business yet this evening.
Move to adjourn, sir.
Hold call, please. Hold call. Courtney. Ms. Bob.
Hi.
You're sure?
I paused it.
Mr. Thornd.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy. I am asleep. Uh, 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 Ms. Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Mr. Deb.
Hi.
We're out of here. Did everybody's name get possibly called? Yes, we got, it's unanimous, we're adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Stay warm.
Yes, stay warm.